Good evening, this is the Dearborn Board of Education meeting on October 9th, 2017. We're ready to start, so Secretary Petlicoff will give us a roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Hamud?
Here.
Trustee Nassar?
Here.
Trustee Mead?
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff here, trustee Thorp?
Here.
President Lane?
Here.
Next item, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Zainab Tiba, principal of Lindbergh Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
My name is Zainab Tiba, I'm the principal at Lindbergh Elementary, and I just wanted to thank everyone, the entire community, for welcoming me and for making me feel at home. I feel as though I've been here for years, although this is my first year. Today I have with me Elena Talib and Ben Ross, who will lead us in the pledge.
Aye.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Elena and Ben, would you come forward? We have a certificate for you. I'd like to officially thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And Ben, thank you for coming tonight, you guys did a great job. So you guys can leave whenever, but we appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Yes. And I think the students are probably going to leave, so we'll wait just a second. Alright, so they're on their way out. Trustee Petlicoff?
We would like to take this time for a moment of silence.
I would like to have a moment of silence. We had two very young children that were shot in Dearborn, they were shot by another child, and then we had the terrible massacre in Las Vegas. So I wanted to take a moment to remember them, so let's have a 10-second moment of silence, please. I would like to make one statement myself. We've done this a couple of times before, that we've had a moment of silence after a mass shooting. I wish we wouldn't have to do this all the time, and I'm going to say something because we've done it repeatedly, and I'm very tired of it. I hope we, as Americans, can get around to doing something about it. There are things that all of us can do, so I hope people who feel that we should do something, and that these incidents should not continue happening, I hope you will do something. People who don't act acquiesce in the way things are, and things will continue, and we'll have to have another one of these, but I would ask people to contact their representatives. We have many representatives, you can contact many of them at the state or federal level, and you could urge them to do any number of things, to outlaw bump stocks, to talk about background checks, to talk about assault weapon bans, et cetera. So I hope you'll do something. I know there's a bill in Congress right now to legalize silencers. Why does someone need a silencer? So I hope that the good people here will take some action, and I hope I won't have to have another one of these, but I wouldn't bet on it if we don't act, so, thank you.
Trustee Secretary Petlicoff? Superintendent's update, agenda items.
So just to go, appreciate the comments, President Lane, just to go along with that, we just want to remind our students that comments that they may make on social media are serious, and so that they've got to just be careful of what they say, and that, you know, we will take them serious, and that people kind of got to get into the regular mode of, you know, there are people monitoring, and it's, we actually did a video with trustee Hamud last year on social media safety, and so when situations occur and people make comments, they've got to then live with those consequences, and, you know, we will take them serious, and we will look into things, and we put a lot of resources. So again, just remind the students, and we'll continue to do that with our administrative team as well.
Thank you.
Wanted to mention on the agenda, we do have high school capacity and boundary line that's coming up later in the agenda, so I just wanted for the public to know that that, we've had that on the agenda for the last, like, three, three to four months of board meetings, starting at May 1st, it'll continue to be there, and so if you want more specific details, you may want to stick around or tune in on TV or on the internet, but we will get into information on things in the plans that have gone to this point later in the agenda, and then we'll also talk about some options moving forward, including what we plan to do when we look at boundary line choices, which the board will see four different options tonight, we had three prior, that it'll be some direction for us to make sure then we go out in the community, which is part of the plan, and we will make sure we get stakeholder input with having a plan of action with meetings in the buildings. So I do have some, on agenda items, some retirements today, and so we have Amala Wadjuma, she was over 22 years of service. We have Ora Stub, over 30 years of service. We have Gada Hamid, over 18 years of service, and Kathy Horstie, over 24 years of service. So want to congratulate all of them and thank them for their dedication to the school district, if we can give them a round of applause. I always send a personal letter to all our retirees, thanking them and congratulating them after the board meeting. Okay, that's it for agenda.
Okay, non-agenda items.
So we have some fantastic news, real positive, that we learned just over a week or so ago. Becker Elementary was named a National Blue Ribbon School. It is quite an honor, it's the first time in the history of the event, going back to 1982, that a Dearborn school has been recognized. There will be a presentation in Washington the first week of November, in which they invite the superintendent, the principal, and a teacher, and so I do plan to attend that, but it's quite an honor to have a national blue ribbon recognition. We will have them here at the next meeting for a formal presentation, following the visit, but I can tell you a lot of hard work, and so Becker just represents the positive teamwork of the entire school district, you know, the work of the Board of Education, the work of all the teachers, administration, parents, community, and the students, and so it's a real positive. And I know we also got some real positive photos with Mr. Mustenin outside of the school on the Friday that we learned of the recognition, and it was just a real great experience to see the students very exciting, excited, and I, you know, I will say, I did help get that excitement going, but they were already excited anyway, and so we just kind of continued with that, and so it's a real positive thing. So congratulations to Becker, and to Dearborn Public Schools, and the Board of Education and the community. This is also National Principal Appreciation Month, we have several principals who are dedicated here, and some that may or may not have been able to make it, we have a lot that are here because of the new teacher hires, so I want to recognize all our principals across the district, and really across the state, for their hard work, and appreciate the great work that they do, because it is a job that continues to get more and more things that you have to deal with, and it's challenging, and so appreciate their hard work and dedication, so maybe we can give that, a lot of our principals a round of applause here. And when I say principals, that also includes all our other administrators, like assistant principals that are recognized as well. We also, today we're recognizing teachers that were hired, and last, two weeks ago it was, or last week, I'm sorry, it was International Teacher Day, and it's just a day that they celebrate and recognize teachers on an international level for the impact they're making. We, in Dearborn, we have our formal teacher appreciation in May across the United States, but they also have an international event, so want to thank all our teachers for their dedication. Just moving right along, I also want to comment on, you know, the warm weather that we had in schools, I think it was three weeks into September. Normally, I think the year before, we got it the first week, and so we always get this little period where we get the extra heat that comes in. This year was actually not as hot or humid as it was last year, although it was over a few days, and so it is a challenging situation. I can say I remember, you know, teaching as a third grade teacher at Salina on the third floor, when we didn't have air conditioning, you know, there, and it is challenging. We've never, you know, shut down the schools for heat, there was some call for it. I discussed it with Cabinet, and one of the things that we've done is we worked with our administrators to make sure things are safe in the schools. We're also exploring options, and I know some of the trustees have mentioned, about maybe having some specific locations in the building, that we could put some air in to give some relief, and what I could tell you is, during those warm days, I was out in the buildings, the buildings without air conditioning, and I could tell you the principals and the staff, the teachers, are doing a great job of giving, you know, students relief, whether it be outside, moving down from the third floor. So we're going to continue to work on that, but, you know, this is one of the things where I'm also in communication with all the superintendents across the county, and most of the districts had stayed open. Most of them, you know, do not necessarily have air conditioning. In our district, we have a multiple array of things, meaning some district, or some schools are fully air conditioning, some are partial, some do not have any, and so it would be, you know, a tough situation to say, you know, for a heat day, we would close down when some schools could operate. So it's one of those things that we just want to balance, we are aware of it, and, you know, there is a financial cost to it, but it's something that we're going to monitor, and we appreciate the support of the parents, staff, as we get through those tough days in Michigan weather.
And not only is there a financial cost, but it's also a cost to the students academically, especially if it stretches for long periods of time, and it happens both at the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year, so it becomes quite a predicament, and it's also difficult on many parents, who are working parents, to have their students home for that many days as well, and those children might be at home in un-air-conditioned buildings as well, so they're, they're not going to be relieved of that environment to begin with by not being in the building, so I think while it's a challenge, it's something that we can hopefully accommodate and do the best job possible.
And from going to the buildings, that's what I saw of our staff and our parents and our community, they were accommodating, so thank you.
Well, I think we've put in air conditioning where we've built new buildings.
Correct.
Facilities.
Or additions.
Or additions, we have, we extended it, I think, to the auditorium at Edsel Ford and some other places.
Cafeteria at Oakman, those kinds of things.
It's spotty, but it is an economic issue, and I know when the state legislature, if they want to talk about extending the school year, they need to think about that as an issue as well, because there's the issue of the teacher, teachers working, but there's also the utilities, and so, an issue will probably revisit at some point. Thank you, Dr. Malika.
Thank you. So I just have two other things I wanted to mention. I will be leading again the Healthy Dearborn Walk on October 25th, and it'll actually be here at Tenac Park at 6:00 PM, so anybody that would like to join me for the walk, or any cabinet or teachers, you're welcome.
So we should see more of your cabinet at this walk?
Yeah.
Just to say.
And the last thing I just want to mention is the, the press release on the dates of the chat, and I know Eric's going to put it on the monitor, the chatting with the superintendent schedule is out, the first one is going to be at Edsel Ford on the 23rd, and again, you do not necessarily have to be a stakeholder in that specific school community, you can go to any event throughout the city. We try to make them regional, and we try to go to the different areas, areas of the city, and do a rotation, so we're planning, I believe, we have seven scheduled, or we have six and then one in reserve, and it's really just a way to connect, and I bring Cabinet there, and we get to discuss and hear, you know, what the parents have to say. Usually it's separate with staff and then parents, and they're just, we found them very valuable, and a great way to connect with the community, our stakeholders, so.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Next. Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations. I don't have the students' names.
Right, we have some students to read, so would you introduce yourselves?
Yeah, introduce yourselves, please.
Madeline McAuliffe.
And Gadi Pizel.
And what school are you from?
Edsel Ford. From the district, commendations to Malik Wasni, a senior at Dearborn High School, and Fatima Abu Omarah, a junior at Fortson High School, who have been selected to give their advice to the Smithsonian Institution as members of the Smithsonian Secretary's Youth Advisory Council. Wasni and Abu Omarah are among 25 students who advise scortin' on topics such as technology and museums, how museums could address societal conflicts and be catalysts for dialogue. Commendations to kitchen managers Beth Isaacs at Olah Smith Middle School and Cheryl Johnson at Bryant Middle School for their outstanding efforts during kitchen remodeling. These two staff members, along with their entire staff kitchen at the schools, have gone above and beyond to feed the students while their renovations were taking place. Special thanks to the following staff members. At Smith Middle School, Arlene Trimmer, Rhonda Harris, Don Kilmer, and Darlene Paracallos. At Bryant Middle School, Tracy Sashikora, Sue Burn, Laura Atkins, Denise Damon, and Fadia Bedoun. River Oaks Middle School, elementary school. Commendations to River Oaks Elementary students who donated $520 to the American Red Cross. The students held a hat drive fundraiser to raise the funds and generate awareness of the needs to assist recent hurricane victims.
Salina Intermediate. Commendations to the Salina Intermediate students, family, and staff, who joined neighbors and elected officials on a recent Saturday to clean up LaPierre Park and neighborhood streets. Commendations to the Salina parents who volunteered their time on a Saturday to help out and sort a donation of meat from the Muslim community in southeast, and distribute it to 150 local families. Thank you to the following volunteers. Mr. Omar Kade, Mr. Malik Saif, Mr. William Ali, Mrs. Gamil Al-Mohamady, Mrs. Hayla Zumer, Mrs. Amanda Bedoun from the Project Dignity Outreach Nonprofit Organization, and Zainab Ali, Parent-Student Liaison. Dearborn High School. Commendations to Dearborn High School student Madison Murdock on winning a 2017 National Student Production Emmy Award from the National Television Academy. Madison won an award in the writing category for her work titled "Listen." Congratulations to Madison and the Dearborn School's Film Program Advisor, Kurt Dowell. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Pleasure to have you, thank you for coming tonight.
Trustee Petlicoff? New staff introductions.
Good evening. At a time when a major teacher shortage is sweeping our nation, it's with much, much pleasure that I introduce our teachers. The HR department, with the help of all the principals and their, their hiring committees, and following our teaching, teacher hiring process, we were fortunate enough to hire 166 new teachers. 166 new teachers that are highly qualified, very excited to be here, and so this is just an opportunity for them to introduce themselves to you. I'm going to ask that everyone, just please say your name, your school, and the position that you've been hired, been hired for. Before I turn it over, I just want to give a really quick thanks to Mr. Rob Cedarland, our Director of Human Resources for Instructional. He attended all the job fairs across the state, also Miss Nata, and he also processed all these teachers and worked closely with our principals with the implementation of the early hiring program, which we didn't have previously, and gave us access to the best teachers sooner than later, at a time when the competition is fierce. Also, I wanted to thank, special thank you to Miss Nata El Madine, our Office Manager and HR, David Hardowen, who played a vital role in processing all the new teachers as well, so.
Before you bring up the first one, though, I appreciate that their teachers and teachers professionally talk all day, so, but they can say more than just their name and their school.
Wonderful.
If they want to give a quick shout out.
So I went around and I said hello to all of them, and I said, you know, this, this, and I said, and you can say anything else you want.
Okay, good, good, because they don't have to.
I said that to some of them, I said, you can say whatever you want, but it's really a great chance.
So hi mom, or whatever.
Yes, and we're really happy, because their days are extremely long, especially at this time of the year, and that's why we moved it to October, and so the attendance has, is better than usual, so I did say thank you to all the ones that I went around and spoke to previously. So did you hear that? You're welcome to say as much as you want.
I know.
Hello. My name's Jennifer Johnson, I'm at Fortson High School, teaching physical education. Prior to this, I was at Schoolcraft College for four years, before that, 14 years at Ramelis High School, and prior to that, two years in Clear Michigan Teaching Elementary. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dan Markaki, I'm teaching at STEM, ACE, and MAID, the art teacher. I've been teaching for six years, degree from Wayne State University, and master's from, master of art education. I'm excited to be here, thank you so much, appreciate it.
So we're calling it STEAM, not STEM, right?
So far it's still STEM, not too sure, hopefully it goes STEAM soon, so yeah.
Your art!
I'm James Radcliffe, I'm teaching middle school, social studies at Smith, and I have all my degrees from Oakland University, including my ed specialist, and I'm really happy to be with the district, I'm seeing some really positive things so far. It's good to be here.
Hi, my name's Ryan Dane, I'm a fifth grade teacher at Maples Elementary, I graduated from U of M Dearborn in 2002, and I really just want to say how excited I am to be part of the Dearborn Schools community, you guys do some great things here.
Hello, my name is Erica Whitford, also fifth grade, also at Maples, got my undergrad from Grand Valley, my master's from Madonna, and like Ryan, I'm really excited to be in an actual school district that seems like it's growing, and that's really promising to me.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Taylor Sandwig, I'm also fifth grade at Maples. I got my undergrad from MSU, and I'm getting my master's from University of Illinois, and I'm really excited to be here, thank you.
Go Green.
Go Green!
Hi, my name is Nadia Ramouni, and I teach second grade at Lori Elementary School. This is my eighth year teaching second grade, so I'm really excited about that. I received my undergraduate degree at Wayne State University, a master's degree from Eastern University, and I'm currently working on a second master's degree at Wayne State University, and I'm really excited to be here.
In what?
In ESL.
Ah, good.
Great.
Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Emily Van Allen, second grade teacher at Lori, got my undergrad at U of M Dearborn, have taken some classes towards my master's at Mary Grove College, and I'm looking forward to working in Dearborn. I've lived here all my life, and I'm glad to be serving the community, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Krista Massey, I'm a third grade teacher at Maples, and I'm just very excited to be getting, be beginning my career here in Dearborn.
Welcome.
I'm Irene Jacobs, and I am first grade at Maples, and I'm excited to be here, this is my, actually my eighth year teaching, but, so this is my first year in this district though, so I'm excited to be here and start out here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Terry Bertazio, I teach ASD in the self-contained classroom at Olah Smith Middle School. This is my fourth, third year teaching, it's autistic student, so I would thank you for having me here.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sarah Domingo, I am a kindergarten teacher at McCullough-Unis, and I love kindergarten, it's my favorite grade, and so I'm extra excited, not only to be in Dearborn, but also in kindergarten. I got my undergraduate degree at University of Michigan Flint, so go blue, and I plan to go to U of M Dearborn to get my master's. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Magdalena Schlinska, and I'm a first grade teacher at McCullough-Unis. I did my undergrad for early childhood and elementary at Wayne State, and I'm currently finishing up my master's in my reading specialist program at U of M Dearborn. I got my reading recovery at Oakland, and then I'm going into my ESL at Still Undecided, kind of going all around, so, but I'm excited to be in Dearborn. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Renee Michaels, I'm a fifth grade teacher at William Ford, I got my undergraduate in, or at MSU, and I'm finishing my master's there as well, in teaching and curriculum with a reading specialist, so, just again, go Green.
Go Green!
Okay, hello to everyone, my name is Joel Garcia, I'm over at Salina Intermediate, I'm over there teaching sixth through eighth grade Spanish. The first year, I believe, Salina's offering Spanish, I'm also working currently on a master's in Spanish as well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Diana Cross, I'm an alumnus of Michigan State and Wayne State. I am teaching third grade at Salina Elementary, this is my 12th year teaching both music and now general ed in elementary, and I'm excited to be here.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Samara Ali, I am a school social worker at Edsel Ford.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Courtney Bondy, I'm the early childhood specialist at McDonald and Lindbergh Elementary, and this is my eighth year in education, and I am very excited to be part of the Dearborn family, thank you.
Hi, my name's Emily Steen, I teach fifth grade at McDonald's, this is my fourth year teaching, three years in Ohio, go Bucks!
Oh boy, that's not going to get there.
She's really...
Did you see how fast she ran away from the microphone?
Hi, I'm Justin Mustenin, I'm a seventh grade social studies teacher over at Woodworth, so I'm literally buzzing with excitement to be here, but the only person who's more excited to be here than I am is probably my grandma who's watching right now, so, hey Grandma.
Grandma, welcome.
Hi, my name is Kristi Massey, I teach first grade at Snow, and it's my 18th year, so, definitely not a newbie.
Good.
Hi, everyone, my name is Marion Bearcat, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Snow Elementary. I'm a product of Dearborn School, so I'm very excited to be working for the district, and I'm excited about giving back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zainab Assad, I'm a graduate from the University of Michigan Dearborn, and I am working at Snow Elementary as a first year teacher in second grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Guadiana, I'm at Snow Elementary as well, fourth grade, this is my first year. I'd like to give a special thanks to the Gear Park staff, because they really prepped me for my first year of teaching here in Dearborn, I felt really welcome, so thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jessica Walker, I'm a graduate of Wayne State University with certification in mathematics and English. I'm very excited to be teaching at Fortson High School, teaching Algebra I. This is my 10th year in education.
Hi, Darren McCormick, I'm a chemistry teacher at Fortson High School. My family and I just recently moved here from Flagstaff, Arizona, where I taught science for five years, and after receiving my, my master's degree in science education, so thank you for welcoming me into your community.
Welcome to Michigan.
Thank you, new teachers, we're so happy to have you in Dearborn, and we hope you'll be with us for a long time. I hear Dr. Mead saying that he's impressed with the number of experienced teachers, and I am as well, I mean, you're not all new grads, we like new grads, but the experience, the...
It's a nice blend.
Yeah, it's great, and we're, we're so happy to have you, so thank you for coming to Dearborn for our students. David Mustenin, looks like he's going to get a photo or something, so he's going to get them outside, so thank you very much for coming tonight. Dr. Malika?
Just wanted to, you know, again, congratulate and welcome all the new teachers, I'll see them in the buildings when I make visits. I also want to give credit to Masum, Rob, Miss Bankhead, Nata, the entire HR team that was mentioned, they've really been working hard with the number, the volume.
166, that's a sizable number.
And that doesn't, you know, when you get into non-instructional hires, too, so they have been, on top of the move they had to make this summer, so they were really dedicated, and again, Mr. Cedarland couldn't be here, but worked very hard, so appreciate their work, and then you saw the principals here in Cabinet, you know, they work in partnership, and this year we got very aggressive with the early start hiring, which was earlier out in May, and we could offer contracts or promise people jobs to the district without knowing the school, so the, the union, the ADSA, and then the DFT were very supportive as well, so thank you.
Okay, acknowledgement of donations?
So I'm going to ask Dr. Chokol, who's going to come up?
Good evening. A donation of $320 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for flexible seating. Two, a donation of $1,500 has been offered to Edsel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for SAT student workbooks. Number three, a donation of $1,090 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for iPads. Number four, a donation of $2,750 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for outdoor playground equipment. Number five, a donation of $184.80 has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for magazines for preschool. Number six, a donation of $2,250 has been offered to the middle schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for religious diversity journeys. Number... Number seven, a donation of assorted golf and tennis items has been offered to Dearborn High School by Ms. Sharon Krill to be used by the athletic department. Number eight, a donation of $500 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Alex Shashko to be used by the art department. And number nine, a donation of $500 has been offered to Smith Middle School by Blue Hands United to be used in Walanda Taylor's ASD classroom.
And thank you to all the donors.
Yes, thank you. We really appreciate their donation.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. I have two blue cards for tonight. One is, I wish to speak to the board about board member statements, and it's Mr. James Allen.
Good evening. My name is James Allen. I'm an attorney in Detroit. And on the way over here, I had to think about two things. One, have I ever given public comment? Usually I'm on the other side of the table, representing a school district or a municipality, and get to listen to public comment. It's not often that I get to give it, so this is the first, first time for me. I'll try to be brief. The second, second thing I was thinking about is how many times have I hired Dearborn School District graduates? And the answer to that question, the best I can recall, is 14 in 17, in 17 years in various capacities. So I, I think, that and the fact that my better half is a 1992 graduate from Fortson High School, I can speak with some authority on just what a great school district you have, how well-run it is. Recently, I had an opportunity to deal with Dr. Malako, your terrific board attorney, and Dr. Masalem to shut down a medical marijuana facility across the street from the Michael Berry Career Center. I was representing the city of Detroit in that matter. Your, your district employees were fantastic in responding to requests and very cooperative in trying to help us in a joint effort to stop something that I, I know that none of you wanted to see occur. So it's a great district, and I have nothing but respect for the district and the people here that serve on this board. It's a very difficult job, but as you know, I've addressed a letter to the board dealing with some board comments that were made regarding my client Osama Sablani on July 24th of 2017. Now, when those comments were brought to my attention, as I would with any client, I discussed the options with him. One of the options that was not discussed, because both of us deal in the public sector and understand the, the costs of litigation to public bodies, was litigation. We didn't discuss that. What we discussed was how to appropriately address those comments and go on public record as responding to them and denying the comments first unequivocally. But also, because we do have such respect for the district, and Mr. Sablani has also hired probably more district employees than I have throughout the years, we have a vested interest in the product that comes out of this body. And the product is, is always affected by the quality of the discourse at this board. And when private citizens are singled out in the way that they were, or that my client was singled out on July 24th, it calls into question the credibility of this body, which I don't think is, is fair to the, to all the members. And it also sends a message to the students in this district about how to appropriately respond to criticisms that are, that are leveled against them. And sometimes it results in people not being as civic-minded as my client and me. And that has a tangible cost to the district that I'm sure you, you've all had to experience before. It also, when, when, when individuals are attacked in public by this body, it also encourages people to respond in kind, and that, that's not good for the educational quality. So I've sent a letter. I took some time with it. I hope that you all will receive it as part of the official records of this board and that you will temper the things that you say as members of this board, as elected representatives of this community, and have some, have some dignity and some respect for, for people who are out doing the best that they can to have a positive impact on this community. The fact that people are advocates for people and positions and policies may approach you, that's part of your job. That's not inappropriate in any way, shape, or form. So if somebody comes to you and asks you to vote in a certain way, that's what representative democracy is all about. And my, my client makes absolutely no apology for advocating positions, for advocating for people. Some in the Arab-American community, some not, members of the Arab-American community. I think he's always thoughtful, and he's obviously trying to help a large constituency of this district with his, with his advocacy. And again, make no, make no apologies for that, and there's nothing inappropriate with that. And I hope that this board will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your public spiritedness on the medical marijuana clinic and, and on this also. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a second blue card. Wish to speak about FOIA request, Mr. Stephen Young from Dearborn.
Hi, I'm Stephen Young. I'm actually here to talk about one particular FOIA request. I believe on your agenda, you have it listed as number nine. The FOIA fee appeal. Okay. You guys have seen the fee schedule that was sent to Mr. Mosop?
Yes, it was in our board packet. Everyone had access to it.
Okay. So it'd be fair to say that the bulk of the cost is in the reviewing the records, correct? For everybody who has it. And, okay, apparently I'm the only one who does. $580 of the $645.99 was coming from that, so, yes. Now, I was trying to figure out why, why that would be so high. And what exactly the district was planning to redact?
We can comment. I can have Mr. Mustenan come up too, just in case. I mean, there's federally protected information, FERPA student information. There's also, you know, employee confidential information, health and otherwise potentially. Without going through it, you know, those are some of the things. And there's other areas that are protected, you know, by state law as well. And so we, we have an obligation to follow state law and protect the privacy rights of our students. So that would be the biggest item that we need to review. And we've, this has been, this matter has been reviewed through our legal department, through our Mr. Courier, through Ira Hallett.
That's fair. In response to your denial for a request, you cited that the...
That's a denial of a request for the waiver of fees.
Yes.
There's no denial of...
Not of the actual information.
Of the actual information.
Yes. But under your description of that, you say that the federal FOIA does not provide access to records held by state or local government, and effectively the state would have their own, correct?
That's what the letter says, yes.
So this is Michigan's FOIA. And... Back to 41. This is the Attorney General opinion number 5500 from 1979. Part P, the names and addresses of students may be released unless the parent of the student or the student has informed the institution in writing that such information should not be released. So would it be fair to assume?
No, we have federal and state FERPA. We cannot release confidential information of, of students. We'd be putting ourselves, you know, our students at risking into legal jeopardy. So I, I couldn't comment on that because I'm not, I'd have to have our department reveal it. But we're very confident in, in this position that we're taking with not releasing confidential student information. You know, we could be putting, you know, again, our students at risk, and we could be putting the district into financial jeopardy as well.
There was a difference between directory information and confidential protected information.
David, do you want to move?
So there, there is a difference between directory information, which in our legal announcements that we put out every year, we spell out the type of information that we will release. Most of this comes in the form of information that you would find in a yearbook. So a student's name, their accomplishments, grade level, this kind of information. So that is not protected information. That would not have to be redacted. The type of information that we refer to that would have to be reviewed would be information that would contain to a student's personal information. Transcripts, medical history, staff medical history, staff discipline. These are the types of info, that's the type of information that could be contained in the emails that needs to be reviewed and redacted, not directory information.
So can I ask, what was the actual search query that was used? For determining 75...
I believe it was trustee vacancy or...
The word vacancy.
Vacancy.
Okay.
In the original correspondence dated July 6th, we stated that the initial search for email between trustees during the time period of May 20th, 2017, and June 27th, 2017, the day the search was conducted, found more than 2,250 emails. From those 2,250 emails, there are approximately 75 emails that contain the word vacancy in the email. So just reviewing, just doing a very preliminary search of board emails that contain the word vacancy turned up that, that number. And that was, again, a very preliminary search, just using that one word. If we were to pursue it further, we could establish other search criteria, but then that may generate more email that would have to be reviewed. And then also, it would also require more time on the part of our IT department to conduct that search.
So logical. What would you say that the probability of trustees emailing each other about student health or faculty health or anything like that would be? Just out of curiosity, is that something that's a common occurrence?
I wouldn't, I don't know if anybody wants to speculate on that, but...
Has anybody actually done that? That's a fair question.
What's the question again, and?
Has anybody...
Done a search?
Actually sent an email to another trustee member with student health or faculty health included in it?
I don't, I don't know.
I think that would be, I mean, you know, there are literally millions of emails that, that, that are exchanged over a given year, over a given time period. To ask a question about whether or not a board member had specific, you know, in that correspondence, I, I, I don't think that that would be, I don't think we could tell that right now at this time, sitting here this evening.
And, and there could be a combination of emails that I work copying on where my team is relaying multiple sets of information, you know, not necessarily health, but other confidential. So it's possible it could be picked up in an email, you know, that way. So I'm not, I couldn't comment specifically, but that, that is a possibility.
Okay. So we can assume that, I guess it's possible. Although I would probably argue unlikely. Okay. Which kind of brings me to another point. This FOIA fee itemization form is dated October 2nd. And the initial was July, I can't get it right there, July 9th? July 6th, correct. What was the delay in releasing the itemized form, which is supposed to be part of the initial 10-day process?
The July 6th presented a estimate of fees so that we could move forward. If, if the, if Mr. Mosop wanted us to move forward at that point in time, then we would have been able to develop the itemized deduction, itemized cost, and then also then, you know, move forward with fulfilling the, the request. So I, the, there is really, the, the dollar amounts are almost identical. There's a little bit of difference because of, because of the timeframe difference. However, the, the, the overall dollar amount remains consistent.
Mr. Young, you're, you're way past the three minutes. So I understand that you want to ask us questions, but I think that these might be better addressed in communication, perhaps written to the board or to the board's attorney, so.
Perhaps I will sit down with... I am not, I'm the communications director. I'm the FOIA coordinator for the district. I would assume that any sort of correspondence would probably be best handled.
Through the attorney, right.
Okay. Well, one last question for you. Is there any reason why this wasn't considered to be of the public interest? Which would allow you to waive all the fees altogether?
Well, the, the only thing I could say is that we, this isn't, this is not a normal request. We get like data things and on our website, or this data, you know, maybe on financial or other things. But it's, it's, we don't usually get requests for emails, so it's something that's not common. We probably haven't had one, I, I couldn't say specifically, but maybe many years, maybe even over a decade. So it's, it's a different type of request than the normal that we would receive of other school districts.
Right, but why would it not be considered something that the public...
Why don't you address that to the board's attorney, the district attorney?
I'm Mason Ali-Bazey. It's a pleasure to meet you. At this point, I'm going to ask that, we need our legal counsel to answer any of your other questions. You exceeded the time limit, limit as our president has informed you. I'm going to ask that, I'm the executive director for Staff Instrument Services, by the way. I'm going to ask that you either set up a meeting with us or put all your questions in writing and send them to us prior to our meeting. And we, everything we do is in, is in the best interest of our students. And I assure you that that is what we will do, we've always done and will continue to do. But at this point, I don't feel that Dr. Malako or, or anyone on our staff should be responding without our legal counsel present. We are following the advice of our legal counsel. And the last I checked, I don't believe you're an attorney. Am I correct?
Would it matter?
I'm just wondering, are you an attorney?
No, I'm just running for the House of Representatives.
Okay.
So...
Well, I wish you all the best. And worse.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully you'll have, make some positive change. But at this point, that's how I'm going to ask us to move forward. Do you have a business card?
Oh, not on me, but...
Perhaps, Mason?
I can give him my business card.
You can give him your business card?
I'll be more than happy to do so.
Okay, great.